Good morning. I called order the December 11th, 2018 meeting for the Salina County Commission Public Forum and Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, not on the items that are not on today's agenda, usually limited to three minutes.
Norman Vannell Salina. If our real estate values go down, we're going to raise the mill levy. I predicted this over six months ago, and I was told, "You're right. Our property values are going down, so we'll have to raise the mill levy or quit spending so much money." And on another issue, roads cost money, but our basic requirement for building a road is to use the materials that are present in the area where you're building the road. To upgrade a road costs money. It's over 70 miles down there to Florence, Kansas, to haul this gravel up here. It's costing too much money. At some time, you're going to have to quit spending money, accept what we got, live with what we got, because you're going to run out of gravel. We are. I mentioned that last week. And if you raise taxes, and if you've been watching the news, people are tired of you raising our taxes. Look what they did in France. And I remember a commissioner said, "Yeah, they might string us up if we keep raising taxes." So I'm just saying, you're going to have to stop this sometime. The bills are going to come due. Yeah, that's... That's all I got for now.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion. It has been moved in second that we approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for December 4th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission meetings of December 4th, 2018 as presented.
Second motion. It has been moved in second that we approve county commission minutes for December 4th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Cognitive behavior presentation with Paula Merrill, intensive supervision officer with community corrections.
Good morning, Paula.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you already stated, my name is Paula Merrill. I am the programs provider for community corrections here in Salina. At our open house, I spoke to Commissioner Sparks, and he asked me to come and to present to the whole group so you had an understanding of what it is that I do. The overall goal for community corrections, of course, is to reduce admissions to prison, because that's expensive. It is cheaper to have people serve their sentence on community corrections than in prison. But we add an additional goal is, of course, we also want to help them achieve crime-free, successful lives. And so that's where I come in. My role is, I have several different hats I wear, but I do skills building. None of, nobody grows up when they're eight years old and goes, "I want to grow up and be an addict," right? That isn't a life goal of anyone. And they kind of have, they lack the skills, they lack the knowledge to make that happen. Depending on what's going on in their environment, they could have trauma, they could have parents that have drug and alcohol issues. All of those things add into that. And so I help them build some of those skills. I'm also cheerleader. I do a lot of encouragement, trying to convince them that they do have assets and abilities. I had one client that went through, a program, completed it. I gave him a certificate. It was just a piece of paper. He took it, he framed it, he put it on the wall, and he told me, "Paula, I've never completed anything before. I look at that every morning and remember that I completed your program." And then I work within a fence, and I need to explain that a little bit. If you think about like a horse whisperer, someone that's working with a horse, if they don't have a fence, they're not very successful at making change. And so I work with the supervision officers at community corrections, where they build this fence, and they use all kinds of things to help build that fence. UAs, written reports, they put a curfew on them, they require sober living, they can do jail dips, increased reporting, lots of different sanctions. And then we work together within that fence to help them succeed, to grow those skills, to learn different ways of looking at the world. And eventually, of course, the fence disappears and they're let go. And so I like to think about it like that and help set those boundaries. I lost you. There we go. So how do I do that? Currently, I facilitate eight different groups. Courage to Change, Money Management, Thinking for Change, Batter's Intervention Program, Seeking Safety, Moral Recognition Therapy, Substance Abuse Program, and Job Tech. Courageous Change is an interactive journaling program. We just started it in the last couple of months. And what we saw is that people coming on corrections really kind of struggled with that original start. And so we came up with this. It is structured. We sit down, we talk about their role, the role of the officer, their skills that they bring into it, and just having an open mind going into corrections. It takes four sessions. They start right at intake. So we get them right at the beginning. And the goal is really a strong start to supervision. We've also, in the last short time, started Money Management. Consumer credit counseling comes in. I'm not going to reinvent the wheel. That's their job. They do it, so they come in and help me with it. And it's really just basic budgeting. But what we found, or what we found was, people get to the end of their supervision time, and they're being extended for payment. Well, if we can start them making payments at the beginning, it's a whole lot easier to make small payments along the way than to come up with a lump sum at the end. And so that's really the goal, is to start them off meeting their responsibilities. Thinking for Change is a cognitive behavioral class. It is probably the number one class I do. There are three sections: social skills, cognitive self-change, and problem solving. If you started using drugs and alcohol at a young age, you never really learned problem-solving skills. And so that and social skills, those are things you learn as a teenager. So we help them do that. Now, I've used this term cognitive behavioral term a couple times now, and so I thought I should define it for you. And I looked this up. Therapeutic strategies designed to change the cognitions that influence maladaptive behavior. I don't think that helps very much, right? That's not a very clear definition. And so to make it simpler, change your thoughts and you change your world. Before you have, every situation, there's thoughts and feelings that lead to an action. That action has consequences. So traditional, old-fashioned probation said, "Get different friends, get a job, do this." But we never told them how to do it. And so they had a really hard time and struggled with it. Newer probation says, "We know you're going to run into these situations, so let's talk about how we're going to cope with them once they come up." If we can't avoid them, how are we going to cope with them? What, can we change our thoughts? Can we have an additional thought that maybe leads to a different action and different consequences? We want our clients to choose the consequences, and obviously, we want them to choose positive consequences. So cognitive behavioral programming addresses a lot of stuff. Motivation, that rethinking, emotional regulation, social skills, problem-solving skills, and relapse prevention. It's kind of a whole spectrum of things that we help them address. Batter's Intervention is for men that have been convicted of domestic violence. We know women also are offenders, but right now, all I am addressing is men. And it's a 24-week program. That's a minimum. That's set by state statute, so they have to meet that as a minimum. We use, it's a group setting. They sit in a circle. We talk about a lot of different things. We do keep it victim safety-oriented. The whole goal is at the other end to have a victim be safer. There are differences between anger management and BIP. Anger management is generally a shorter program, and it really views violence as an outburst. It is one event that's an outburst. It also, also deals with like, you can do anger management with stranger violence. For Batter's Intervention, it's specific to domestic violence. We are required to work with a DV agency. I work with DVAC here in Salina. We include lethality assessment, trying to figure out, is this going to be a lethal event? And the real emphasis is on addressing those belief systems that lead to dominance and control. Everyone says, when you talk about domestic violence, "Why doesn't she just leave?" And I want to change the conversation to, "Why does he batter?" If we talk about, "Why doesn't she just leave?", then we're putting the responsibility on her when it isn't her choice to use violence. The other thing is, as a society, as a community, we are really good at getting women out of domestic violence situations. We have shelters set up. We have ways of doing it. We have, just, we're really good at it. The problem is, what happens? The offender moves on to the next victim. Until you address, "Why does he batter?", "Why does he choose to use domestic violence?", "Why does he choose to use domination and control?", you're never going to change the behavior. The moving to, getting to the source gets us long-lasting change. I had a client that went through my program. He actually completed. He came home to a situation where in the past, he would have responded with violence. He chose not to. He got his kids safe. He called the police, which he had never done before. And the next day, he called me and he said, "I heard your voice in my head telling me not to respond that way." And I was like, "Yes." Have to hold on to those stories of the ones that tell me that it was successful. Like I said, we talk about power and control. Not everything that a batterer does is illegal. Threats of suicide is not illegal. There are some things with economic abuse that are illegal. And so the outside of that kind of circle is all those crimes, the things that they can be arrested for. And not all of them sound to, a lot of domestic violence, like forgery, you wouldn't think about it. But it is domestic violence. It's economic abuse if it's done within an intimate partner relationship. Batter's Intervention gets to the beliefs, to the roots. We use both cognitive behavioral and effective, intensive effective, which is the emotional part of it, right? Where are the beliefs? What are we talking about? You can get rid of the top of the dandelion, and the dandelion just grows back. You've got to get to the root in order to truly change behavior and get a different outcome. Batter's Intervention groups have been found to be effective if they use those two components in conjunction. So obviously, I talked about Batter's Intervention more than I talked about anything else. It's kind of a passion project for me, but I do other things as well. Substance abuse education. I am not a licensed counselor, so what I do is considered education. I have three programs. They're designed for clients that have gone through traditional treatment, and they either need more programming or it didn't work, and so let's try a different approach, or they don't qualify for funding. And so then, those are the clients I get. Programs that I run, I run Substance Abuse Program, which is out of the University of Cincinnati's criminal justice program. It's very similar to T4C. It is cognitive change. It does social skills. It does problem solving. All of the examples have to do with substance abuse. And it is also 42 sessions long, so they meet twice a week, because it's very long. Moral recognition therapy is a newer one that we're using. It's been around for a while, but we're just using it recently. It really goes more toward decision-making skills, like, and moral reasoning. Changing from only doing things based on reciprocity to, okay, I actually want to help someone else. Or I want to do something because it's the right thing to do. It is 12 steps, but it is self-paced. So let's say they're at step six, and they, they don't tell the truth. Well, step two is honesty, so now we're going to go back and do step two again, because you were just dishonest with me. And so it can take longer than 12 weeks to get it done. It can be done in as short as 12 weeks. Seeking Safety is also a newer class we're doing, and I'm really excited about it. It treats substance abuse as a response to past trauma. A lot of times, people use drugs and alcohol in order to cover up, to numb past trauma. And instead, this says, "Okay, let's deal with them both at the same time." Now, again, I'm not a licensed counselor, so it is present-focused. We acknowledge the trauma. We acknowledge the importance of the trauma, but we only deal with how it affects their today's life. I don't deal with the counseling part of dealing with trauma. Instead, it's, "How does it affect your life today?" So we talk about boundaries, healthy relationships, grounding, how to refocus when a PTSD episode happens. Length of programming is entirely determined by the client's needs. And then Job Tech. Job Tech, when I first started, was a bigger part of what I do. Now it's a little bit less. I think part of that's because the employment market's better right now. But it is truly about how to get a job, why we want a job, how to keep a job. And some of it is as simple as, you're going to have to take a shower and put a clean shirt on if you want to get a job. Even if you're going to a construction job, you need to be clean, have a nice shirt on. You can't go in the holy t-shirt that you wore to sleep in. So we also do a lot with interview, how to answer some of the questions, especially the hard ones. All of the programming I use is KDOC-approved, which means it is evidence-based. It has all been researched. It has all been peer-reviewed and has a long history of showing that it can help clients. I wanted to let you know that I am really passionate about my job, and I truly do believe that we can make positive change in our client's life with some encouragement and some skills building. And I, I have stories. Some of them have really turned out well. And I know I don't get to all of them, but I know I get to some of them, and that's, that's enough for me. So thank you very much. And do you have any questions?
Questions from the commission to Paula?
Just a couple. How many people are in the program at any given time? I mean, I mean, I don't think the public understands the extent of your work. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Some of the classes, like Batter's Intervention, I have to limit the number that are in it any one time, just because some of it's hard to do. Like I said, right now, Job Tech, I've been running about three, so that's not too bad. And they're only staying a few weeks.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, I had 20 in there at a regular basis. Batter's Intervention, I regularly run between 20 and 22. It is a six-month program, so it takes a while to get them all through. Thinking for Change and some of the other ones, I usually run a couple every year, usually three. And those also run about 20 in each class.
Okay.
Seeking Safety and SAP, MRT are lower numbers right now, but those are really because we're building them. The intake ones, of course, every person that comes through intake comes through it, and so that's about 28 months.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do your classes have a start and finish? I mean, let's say you're, you're sent over to Corrections, and you're halfway through one of your classes. Do they wait for the next class to start before they, or is this, can you jump in at any point in the?
It depends on the class. Some of them are open entry. Batter's Intervention, MRT, Job Tech, of course. Those are all open. Seeking Safety is open. So I'd say about half and half. T4C, SAP, some of those more regimented ones, they have to wait for the next class to start, so.
Further questions? All right. Thank you, Paula.
And thank you, Paula. I just wanted to ask because it was like going through the open house again and listening to your, this presentation. I just thought the public needs to know a little bit more about what we're doing over there, I think. And thank you for the presentation. And Ms. Greivis, thank you for bringing that to us.
All right. Once again, thank you. We'll move on to item number four.
Real property relief applications with Sean Robertson, county appraiser.
Morning, Sean.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
We have a couple of disaster relief applications. I want to run through a little bit of history. I know that this current commission has not heard any of these, and I'm unsure whether even any individual commissioners have heard these before. Before 2013, all properties, and still are valued as of January 1st, but the taxes that were paid on those was based on that value January 1st. And even if your home burned on January 2nd, you owed the taxes based on that entire value. In 2013, there was a statute that was passed allowing for a residence that is destroyed by a disaster, including a number of different things, and most commonly, fire, that they could be abated those taxes based on the destruction of that in the middle of the year. Anytime that this happens, it has to be substantially destroyed, and that's defined in the statute as over 50% of it is destroyed. And if that occurs between January 1st and August 15th, the commission has the authority to abate the taxes for the year in which that occurred. Anytime it happens after August 15th, because that's the time period where taxes are being set, that they're not, they have the ability to, or you have the ability to abate future taxes. In general, that won't be done, and I'll explain why with one of these applications here in a minute. But anyway, I just also wanted to let you know that you have the authority and ability to abate these taxes. It is not a requirement. It's up to you. The first one that I'd like to run through is a property at 659 South 9th. It is owned by James and Stacy O'Shea. This property had a fire on July 17th of 2018. It was later demolished. If you go by there now, it's a vacant lot. And I want to run through the sheet that says disaster relief tax abatement recommendation on the top. How we've determined to go about this is, in our mind, there was, there's, is still some value in the land regardless of the structure being there or not. Then there's also value that was in use for part of the year. So what we do is apply the percentage of value for land and building. In this case, the property was valued at $81,700. The building or structure is accounting for $68,340 of that, and the land, $13,360. And you see the percentages beside that. So then we look at the total 2018 tax, the tax attributed to those buildings. The buildings only, because the tax would still be due on the land. Then the portion of the year that that was destroyed was five and a half months' worth on your sheet, about 45.8%. So the abatement would be 45.8% of the taxes attributed to the structures, which comes to $480.03.
All right. Questions of Sean? And this is, this is, everything is according to state statute here as far as what we're, where we're headed. And again, as Sean stated, we don't have to say yes.
Right.
I think the prudent and reasonable thing is to say yes. That's, that's my personal opinion. Was, the, the total that was on here, the $81,700, that is what the number was that the property is on the tax roll. is on the tax rolls for?
Yes, that's what it was valued at as of January 1st.
And just to, to be perfectly clear, the building is 83.6% of the total value, of which we would be returning 45.8% of the taxes on the building only,
Correct.
which amounts to $480.03.
That's right.
Further comments or questions of Sean? All right, I'll, is the, is the property owner here? Not seeing so, bring it back to the Commission for possible action?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve that Disaster Relief Tax Abatement Recommendation by the Appraiser for 659 South 9th Street, Slaena, Kansas, in the amount of $480.03.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the, the tax abatement, or return of $480.03 for the property at 659 South 9th. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair, quick question. This will come through our normal tax correction orders through the clerk
Yes.
to sign off on, so.
All right. We'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will move on to the next one with Sean.
Okay, the second one is a property at 123 King Street, owned by Gary Olson, 123 King in Gypsum, just to be clear. This one falls into the part that I said I was going to talk about later. This fire occurred on December 1st of 2017, so you have the ability to abate future taxes, which would be the 18 ones at this point. In general, this isn't normal. This is the first one that we've run across because we, in the Appraiser's office, value properties as of January 1st. Obviously, we can't do all 27,000 properties on January 1st. We had actually valued this property just a couple of weeks prior to the fire. So, the value that we placed on it as of January 1st was, was not reflective of the fire that had occurred in December. So, again, to look at the Disaster Relief Tax Abatement Recommendation, again, this fire occurred on December 1st of 17. It was substantially destroyed by that fire and then not repaired in 18. We have a total value for 2018 of $39,900. The building's accounting for 87.8% of that, and the land at 12.2%. Again, with the calculation at the bottom, the tax attributed to the buildings is $472.26. It was destroyed substantially for the entire year, so for 2018, the entirety of that would be the abatement of $472.26.
I see in the paperwork here that we have it valued at $39,900.
Yes.
And, and the applicant's email to you, estimates to rebuild the house are in excess of $100,000.
And that's the difference between a market value and a cost to replace. That has to do with insurance, and certainly, to, to rebuild a house would cost substantially more than the market value as it sits.
Again, fill me in. The fire occurred on 12/1 of 2017.
Yes.
And, but we're talking about the 2018 taxes.
Yes. Anytime that this disaster occurs after August 15th of a particular year, you're authorized to abate future taxes. So, that would be the 2018 taxes.
Which, which, well, in essence, we're, we're talking about 100% of the taxes in minus the land value. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this tax has already been paid?
That I do not know. Because we're dealing with the 18 taxes, they aren't due yet.
So, so what we would be considering then is that the taxes that are due are, are or are not payable, one or the other. We're voting on it one way or the other. It's not, not an amount of rebating it to the property owner, it's amount of, of abating the tax.
Yes.
So.
It's the same for the previous one that we considered also.
I know that the property owner is here. If you'd speak, step to the podium then. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm Gary Olson, 7300 South Whitmore Road, and I'm pretty sure those property taxes have been paid. And, you know, I probably should be greedy and just ask why I don't get an abatement from the date of the fire, but I guess there's statutes that say I can't do that. So, I'd be perfectly happy just getting the taxes abated. And I didn't even really think about it until I went to writing out all my checks, and I looked at the valuation, and I'm like, wow, I'm paying a lot of money here on a property that's basically worthless, and so, anyway.
Well, I, I question it as basically worthless when you estimate the cost to rebuild the house is $100,000.
Well, yeah, but I haven't spent that $100,000, so, I mean, yeah, I'd have a brand-new house if I'd blow $100,000, but it's basically a house that's been burnt, and I think you got pictures showing it, all the damage on the house and things.
Right. And, and you've provided us with insurance money here, papers that say that, but they, they gave you, what, $80-some thousand for, so that's, that's hardly worthless.
Well, yeah. And I'm still out the $25,000 deductible, too, and so, it just is what it is. It was a bad event for everybody involved.
All right. Well, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions of, of Sean from the Commission? Comments?
Kind of a sidebar on this, Sean. In going through the paperwork, there were, there were two properties involved in this fire.
Yes, I saw that.
But only one of the, and both of them were, I don't know if they were both totaled, but they were both heavily damaged.
Right.
But the other property didn't come for an abatement?
No, they did not. Well, and I would have to look. It is entirely possible that the other property appealed their value in March. That would have actually been the most streamlined way to have taken care of this in the first place. But, but, but the value on this wasn't appealed in March, and so, we're doing this now. The end result is the same. But it's entirely possible the other property took that route.
That, that was a question I was going to have. Mr. Olson had the opportunity to appeal this, so you wouldn't have to go through this process.
Correct.
All right. The further questions, comments? Not all entertain a, a motion to act one way or the other here.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Disaster Relief Tax Abatement Recommendation by the County Appraiser for 123 King Street, Gypsum, Kansas, in the amount of $472.26.
Second the motion. Been moved and seconded that we approve the tax abatement recommended for 123 King Street, Gypsum, Kansas. Is there further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to item number five.
RFA 209-18, Link Road Upgrade with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just got a couple little slides here I'd like to show that shows where the location of this road is within the county. It's up in the northwest corner. Right here is Glendale, so it's just to the east of Glendale. And this is the, the section of roadway that we would be looking at and the distance that it would cover. This is a two-mile stretch between Lockhart and Wat, or Watkins and Lockhart, I'm sorry. And then, this just goes over, a little over a mile. And the request for action is to change the road designation of, on Link Road north of Watkins. The Road and Bridge Department, along with the wishes of the residents of Link Road, would like to request the Saline County Board of Commissioners change the designation of a specified portion of Link Road from earth to gravel. This designation change will begin at the intersection of Link Road and Watkins Road and proceed north approximately 6,000 feet. The gravel will end 200 feet north of 4129 North Link Road. The alternatives for action would be to take no action, and this portion of Link Road would remain earth. The staff recommendation is that the Commission allow the Road and Bridge Department to improve this section of roadway to gravel. It will allow the citizens that live on this road better access to their homes and provide a better roadway for emergency services in inclement weather. The improvements will include ditch work, culvert repair, regrading, compaction, shaping, tree removal, and placement of aggregates. This work will need to be completed in the spring with county forces as soon as the weather allows. The budget impact is the 2019 Road and Bridge has a gravel, road upgrade, safety improvement line item that will have a balance of $400,000. We are estimating that the aggregate cost will be around $30,000.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. So, this, this is a request at this stage of the game, this is actually a request from Road and Bridge to take this forward.
Yes.
I know initially, we were looking at a petition to, to get this done,
Right.
which, and, and my apologies to you, sir, from the Commission on, on kind of giving you the runaround here, it feels like to me. If it doesn't feel like that to you, it should, I think, but anyway, we're finally getting to the end of the, the light at the end of the tunnel here. But that having been said, then, then we can go forward with this just based on an RFA from Road and Bridge. Am I, am I stating that correctly?
You are. You are stating that correctly. I checked with the, the GIS mapping department, and the, the official county map designation is changed by an act of the Commission. So, if you were to just change the designation of that road, that would allow the Road and Bridge Department to use its forces to go upgrade the road to gravel. And it would be, you know, we, we would pull the ditches and, and place the gravel, and it wouldn't be any different than, you know, the, any of the other miles that we have.
What, what prompts Road and Bridge, as an example, to, to come forward with an, I mean, is there a traffic count? Is there a policy, a number of people living on the road? What prompts Road and Bridge to come forward with this type of request?
For this one, it has to do with, these are people's homes. They, they live there. You know, it's, it's not a hunting lodge.
That's a one-mile stretch of road?
It is.
With how many houses?
There, there are five houses in that stretch. And so, this has, has really kind of been ongoing. I don't know how we got to this point, but I do know that these, this, this is these folks' home, and they, I feel that they deserve access to them. You know, it's, it's not like they decided to feed cattle up there, or, you know, they decided to go build a hunting lodge or something like that and expect access. So, that's just really kind of a way to clean something up that's been out there for a while.
Okay. Are there further questions or comments from, from the Commission to Darren?
One of my quick questions is that last week or a couple of weeks ago, you'd mentioned kind of to do this, though, that you had another mile maybe that you was going to take off of gravel and put to, to earth road to kind of compensate for doing this.
Yes, and, and that's a separate study session and conversation that we'll be having.
Okay.
There are some things that, looking at our transportation system as a whole, that really could be, it could be swapped out.
Okay. I just.
All right. This is a project that probably requires an opportunity for the citizens to speak. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this, on behalf of, of this one way or the other. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for, for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the upgrade by Road and Bridge to the section of Link Road as listed in RFA 209-18.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 209-18, Link Road Upgrade. Are there any further comments?
I mean, I, I know this is after the fact. Is there any reason why, I know that it says here that we will wait till spring to do something? Is there any of this road, I mean, work can be done way before spring, though?
You know, we were, we were trying late in the fall to get some, some things done, and with, with the frost coming out of the ground, going in there and working on that road with track equipment, it's just continually tearing it up and making it worse than it is. And so, I would just as soon wait till spring to be able to do that.
Okay. I just wondered about the trimming the trees and cleaning ditches and stuff like that. I mean, if there was any of that.
We tried to get, we, we, we did, we did. We got some of the trees trimmed up and some removed, but then, the weather just set in.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Before I call for a vote on this, I do want to apologize to the, the people that have requested this originally, and I really do feel like the Saline County has kind of drugged their heels on this one a little bit, and we should have acted quicker than we have. As a Commission, I know that we were somewhat misinformed here, so to speak, as to what, what our role in this, the action was, and it looks like we've come to the, the proper conclusion through Road and Bridge Department. So, thank all of you for your patience on that. And at that time, that having been said, I will ask for an approval of this RFA. Or have, we've already made that motion in a second, I'm sorry. I will ask all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again. All right. We'll now move to other business or announcements. I, I will say that I did attend the City of Gypsum City Council Meeting last night to give them an update on what's going on in Saline County as best I could, what's looming ahead for us in terms of what's going to cost money and what, what we can do to help them down there in southeast part of the county, so. And it was appreciated that someone from the county did show up there. I will announce before we adjourn that we'll have a further, further, further study session upstairs in, is that correct, Rita? We're going upstairs?
Yes.
In room 209?
17.
So, 217, excuse me. I don't even know where I belong. So, all right. With that having been said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting and move upstairs. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.